Okay, it is seven oh two, time to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, if you need some reproof, please.
Sure. Dear Lord, allow us to have the courage and the strength to make the decisions that are appropriate for the city and the city's residents. You know, your son's name is right.
All right, call the rural male.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the meetings from last regular meeting? Special meeting is May twenty fourth through second, June seventh.
I wanted to make a correction on there because we forgot to excuse Carla from her last meeting.
We didn't have her.
Her last meeting was when?
Meeting before?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to, you know, to excuse her.
Are you talking about from the special meeting?
You have to make a motion.
That was a special meeting.
That was the?
Special meeting?
Yeah, that wasn't at the meeting, yeah, no.
So, yeah, she could make special meeting or whatever meeting it was, or.
It was the Jan second meeting.
It was the hearing, and I don't think we.
No?
Yeah, yes, it was, yeah. That's what she missed.
You've been drinking. No, not yet.
So, I don't think that they need corrective because we don't have minutes for that.
All right, I'll get to review.
All right, motion to adopt or approve.
So, I'm gonna say.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
We're on the last regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It was for all of them.
Oh, it was for all the meetings.
Okay, well, yes, anyway.
All right, auditor slash treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, I'm gonna read the treasurer's report. Mr. Millane could make it tonight, he works Monday evenings. And so you'll see on the first page of his treasurer's report for May two thousand twenty one, just the sweep account balance, our main account, in the money market. I can't remember if it's been said in open session, but we're in those two accounts currently and not in CDs because the rates are so low. Those accounts are actually getting higher interest than CDs, which is kind of a crazy world. On the next page is the interest year-to-date, it's seven hundred sixty-one dollars seventy-five cents. Last year at this time, we were at thirteen or fourteen thousand, so again, rates are very low. No freebies from the Fed right now. And then the next two pages are essentially Mr. Millane's bank reconciliation. You'll see on the first page, his summary of our debits or expenses out of the account, and then credits, revenues, chargebacks, et cetera. Coming down to his total bank balance at the bottom, less outstanding checks. And on the next page, as he looks through the book expenses instead of the bank statement, he finds a difference of zero dollars, again, between the bank and the books. And I'm just looking through some of the adjustments. Actually, I don't see any adjustments, so very clean look for both of us. So, that's the treasurer's report, the auditor's report. I think I'm gonna come over here, that's all right, Scott?
Yep.
The auditor's report, I'm continuing to use this kind of online format for ease of use for council and shareability. So, I guess I'll start with a financial summary. Again, the city's revenues outpaced expenses in May as in April. We got our first disbursement of the property tax settlement for the year. Oh, I need to go back, I'm sorry. And it was in excess of quarter million dollars. It was actually much higher this year for the first disbursement of the last year by five digits. I'm gonna guess most of it is due to the reappraisal of property values and currently the strong real estate market in the nation. Revenues for May, seven hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred thirty-five, and expenses, three twenty-seven, four six nine. The difference is mostly that property tax check and one project-related check at a hundred thousand. The check was written out from our side in June. You can go to the next page, thank you. Here's our fund balances as a percentage of healthy balance goal. General fund sixty-four, combined street funds at healthy capital, the same water, essentially the same, what day this week? Thursday, our July first, Thursday or Friday, our July first payments will come out, that's about two hundred thousand dollars. And then we'll see, we'll be able to compare year-on-year on how we're doing in the water fund. Sewer fund seventy-five. You can go to the next one. The next one's the statement of cash position, month-to-date totals, there's a whole bunch of data on here, you can see the difference in the general fund. Well, hopefully you guys can see, you've got your good glasses on today. Two hundred seventy-seven thousand versus one hundred forty-three in expenses, that's differences, the property taxes. And then you'll see a street levy, rec levy, and a strong amount for the water and sewer funds. So, last, or a couple weeks ago, we received our financial indicators, council, you may have read about it in Athens Messenger, but I wanted to cover it quickly. Fourteen out of sixteen of our indicators are now in the green, with one indicator left as non-applicable. Of the two flashing yellow indicators, the main takeaway is our major capital assets are in need of investment. That would primarily be water, sewer, street, and city hall itself. Basically, our stuff sold, and we're working to replace it, but that's, we already knew. The city saw notable improvements in cash position funds from two thousand nineteen, net cash, and income tax collections. The goal for next year, we've already set, is all green indicators across the board, which has never been done here at the city. Let me go one more there. So, there's two thousand nineteen, five yellow, three red. I've brought this up before, but it's just nice to have the visual. Eight indicators, with four of them red, is fiscal watch territory, so at the end of two thousand nineteen, we were right there. That's actually what they use now to define their fiscal watch, is these indicators. There's a final decision from the state auditor, but that's how you start the process. And on the next page is our two thousand twenty. So, this was actually a data error, which we will fix, and this is our capital asset score. It's been yellow all six years that we've gotten scores. So, essentially, effectively, this means the city's financial position once negative and losing ground, where debts were increasing and liabilities were increasing faster than fund balances and revenues. And then the fund balances and revenues themselves were in fact decreasing, with the green indicators, the opposite is now true. Revenues and balances grew faster than our liabilities last year. So, if you could scroll down one more for me, that basically means that compared to two thousand thirteen to two thousand nineteen, the city changed course financially. I'd love to say that means we can fix everything today. Fortunately, that's not the case, but it means we're on the right track, and many of the things we did last year, we should basically double down on and continue doing, so that we can multiply our efforts for the next five years. And for, to me, some of the things that this brings to our table is effective five-year, ten-year plans across city departments and the city as a whole. And the ability, I think the next point says, the ability to plan, oh, no, compete for larger grants as the city can afford larger matches in the future. Decline in regular yearly maintenance as the assets are replaced. And then, basically, insulating city services from economic downturns. So, on your, in your guys' email, there is a link to see the full report, and then here's just one page of it, just to show an example. This is unrestricted net assets, this basically means, well, versus the average daily expenses. So, we use this for our average balance. One of the reasons why, and an average healthy balance goal, one of the reasons I've introduced that to the language is because that's what the auditors measure. So, you can see, if the city was to stop getting revenue today, in the past years, we would have lasted forty days, then maybe thirty-one, nineteen last year, and we jumped up, I believe it's sixty-six, sixty-six days, which to the auditors was a good score. And then I don't know if we can hit the other two. But we saw similar things. So, the general fund net, or undersigned fund balance was down to, I think it was two days last year. The city could have lasted two days without regular revenue, which was basically hand-to-mouth financing, at the end of two thousand nineteen, I meant to say. And we're up over a hundred days, so a hundred and fifteen now. So, that's a pretty good score. I just wanna finish, I wanna take the opportunity to welcome the Lodge Hocking College back to Nelsonville as they reopen their doors today. If anybody drove through town this Saturday, it was swamped, it was crazy busy. So, I wanna thank folks like the Hocking Valley Railway Adventure, Adventure Pro, and our businesses we'll be talking about here shortly about the lodging tax. They were all pulled to the brim, and I thought it was great. I don't know if Scott has this in his plan to speak about, American Rescue Plan funding, significant, significantly delayed and significantly cut. And we're pretty disappointed about it, to be honest. But it's a great example of why everyone at City Hall is pushing for reserve funds, so that we can withstand sudden funding changes like that, so. That's all I have, any questions?
No, sir.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the, if there's any treasurer's report.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, mayor's court report, of course, I forgot to put it off, but I can tell you from memory, last mayor's court, we did thirty-two hundred dollars in mayor's court. The total for the year is almost thirty thousand dollars. At the year prior, it was less than thirteen hundred dollars, so quite an improvement, quite a job by our police department, so. That's the report. Any got any questions? I'm happy with it. It's mainly traffic tickets, operating without a operator's license. That's a big one, there's a lot of those, and very few, Mr. Mayor, it's all basically traffic offenses, a lot of, ninety-five percent of.
Are we utilizing our new software now?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have the ability to generate monthly reports with that?
We do.
Is that something that we might be able to have with our, like, on our website with our auditors and treasurer's report also?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a, Serge does a good job. All right.
Motion to approve the mayor's court report.
Second. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. All right, citizens' comments. We have one letter here, I'll read it real quick here, and we've got.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object, just to get to, you can read it, go on, but I'm gonna object because it has nothing to do with our agenda and/or stuff that goes back to two thousand eighteen, stuff that, dig up old trash.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, city council, my name is Melissa Perez Clemente. I reside at two sixteen Fort Street, Nelsonville, Ohio, four five seven six four. My citizen comment for this June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one virtual meeting is a warranted request for the immediate resignation from or removal by council vice president Dan Sherman. How's for my request? Verbal racial attacks against myself and my Puerto Rican heritage stayed within the city building. Violation of my First Amendment rights during Nelsonville City Council meeting on four thirteen twenty. Making derogatory statements directed towards myself and my husband during a virtual finance committee meeting on eleven eighteen twenty. Organizing, conducting an event held on the Nelsonville City Square, the Chili Cook-Off, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, with no issued permit for doing so. While president of council and fulfilling the duties of conducting mayor's court, Dan Sherman presided over his own case on nine eleven nineteen. Prior to Nelsonville City Council meeting of nine twenty-three nineteen, Vice President Dan Sherman verbally accosted me in the foyer of the city building, loudly using profanity and name-calling. Non-fulfillment of payback for lumber from the destruction of the Gaga Pit initiated by Vice President Dan Sherman. Purchase order shows lumber for Gaga Pit eight seventy-five thirty-five, Vice President Dan Sherman has made restitution of only a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Damage done to city equipment, backup invoice showing payment of the city in amount of one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and eighteen cents. No restitution made to the city, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Business, any more citizen comments? Have you done with that? Okay. All right, business and organizational comments, anything? Committee discussions? We actually need to have a recreation committee meeting, I'll get with the members and see what day works for them, which is brought to my attention today. Anybody have anything?
No, I will say, Planning Commission, yeah, Planning and Development, but Planning Commission is meeting on July thirteenth, so the Tuesday after our next city council meeting. And one of the things that they're going to be discussing is maybe, you know, tiny houses, zoning on city lots, that type of thing.
Isn't there another community watch meeting scheduled for the eighth?
It is on the eighth.
For some reason, the eighth.
Yeah, the eighth, so Thursday, it's the first Thursday, no, I'm sorry, it's the second Thursday, actually, but eventually it'll be the first Thursday of every month.
So, we have a community watch meeting on?
At six o'clock.
Eighth at six o'clock.
And I know Chief Fitch will be.
Chief Fitch will be there, so please encourage everyone to attend, we only had seven people last time, so. All right.
On the committee meeting, the public notice of it, it says that people are not allowed to attend, but I think Mr. Hunter ruled it after July first.
Yes.
I could be wrong about that, but.
No, you're, you're correct, and actually, our public information officer, Dan Pfeifer, was informed today that that needed, a correction needed to be sent out on that, that effective July first.
Yes.
People may attend meetings in person, so the Planning Commission meeting will permit people to attend in person, even though the original notice says not.
Thank you.
That'll include our council meetings.
That'll include our, yeah.
Everything.
Yeah, everything moving forward. Sure, the city manager's gonna talk about that.
Can we also have a utility meeting and a finance meeting?
Sure.
I can do utility and that you want.
Are you trying to piggyback on, or?
That's, I think Carla has the tightest schedule, so we'll wait on, if you can just tell me what your day is available, and I'll see if everybody else is good.
All right.
That work for me, just let me know.
Okay, so, department updates? Who we have first? Mr. Barber, Department of Public Security. Chief Barber, please.
Chief, thank you.
All right, so it's been a little while since I did an update, but the last meeting was canceled. So, since the stuff, I'll just kinda give it in chronological order here, we've had three intentional fires, two that were unrelated, one on May twenty-first, one on May twenty-four that we were looking at, and one on May thirtieth. These fires are being investigated now, one arrests has been made related to one of the fires. In the past few weeks, we've seen a drastic increase in structural fire calls. Usually, this peak does not take place until the heating season. But with the rapid response time of our on-duty staff, we have seen the civilian loss of life and very minimal property loss. We currently have one full-time physician that will be filling the house soon, we're waiting for FPNA paperwork and final approval, which city manager has that information tonight. We did need to schedule a police and fire committee meeting to schedule a civil service testing to create an eligible list, our list has been exhausted. And I've got some other things right now, and they're all sort of been working with. On May twentieth, there is a day-long vehicle extrication class for our tri-county fire EMS program. And with rescue calls on the Hocking River increasing, we have been increasing training for additional crew members. Recently, we were able to send another member along with Athens Fire for Swiftwater Rescue Certification, and that member's now back with a new certification. As you know, Bailey's Trail, mountain bike trail system is now open. As of now, we don't have any of the trail system in our coverage area, but we will be called for mutual aid and EMS services on the trails. On May twenty-third, a mock exercise took place at York Township's long-term fire department, the need for rapid EMS response to the trail system during this event was, this mock training was very evident. That's something we're working on right now. On June first, county put into effect the county-wide automatic mutual aid system. What this means for the city is we will be called into York Township and surrounding area for more fire calls than we are now. City fire EMS coverage will still be priority in the event that mutual aid is needed. In the city, these additional departments will continue. Sorry about that. In the event that mutual aid is needed, we will make sure that we have a city protected before we have all of our resources outside of the city. And these additional departments will, will continue to respond to the city if they are needed. On May twenty-second, we responded to the city pool for a small hydrochloric acid leak. We were able to neutralize the product safely, dispose a bit, and clean the area for the city employees. The cause of the leak was just a faulty pump hose, I know a lot of people in Facebook land had all these different theories of what was going on, it was something very small. Remember those calls have spiked in the city, with crew members responding to more and more of those calls in a single day. We do have, we're tracking some, some fentanyl-laced marijuana that's in the county now. We haven't, that hasn't impacted us here yet, but that's something that we're looking at. And that's about it, I think the last thing I have is we went out with Adventure Pro and cut some problem snag areas off the river last week. There were some areas that, a lot of people take the Hocking River for granted, there's a lot of areas that are actually very deep holes and have strong current. That current could irritate the rafts and canoes and the thousands many times. So, we went out with that, their crew, and we cut a lot of those snags out and removed some of the snags from the river to make it safer. On a slow day, we're seeing up to a hundred people a day on the river, so it's definitely getting a lot more used and used to. So, those calls, we completely anticipate increasing in nature and increasing in number.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions for Harry? Mr. Chief Barber, okay. Mr. Collins?
So, we'll start with the one that everybody wants to talk about, the potholes. We're working on them, we're trying to do two days a week on top of mowing. We've had thirty-two water leaks since the last meeting that we were at. Today, we went out this morning, we got three and a half tons down Patchen, and we had a water leak. We're at that time of year, where vacations are cycling through, so we're down a guy. We're reading this week, reading meters, so we're down, down another guy for that. Last Wednesday, we got twelve and a half tons down. I mean, we're, we're getting through them as fast as we can, I would just want people to know that, because I can't go into Walmart or anywhere else without somebody jumping on me about potholes.
Welcome to Nelsonville.
Right. And it's okay, I, I get it, but these guys are really busting their tails, and they're doing everything they possibly can. So, we've had the sweeper out running as much as possible, as much as weather's permitting. You get it out, and we've had a little bit of rain, and it just makes mud everywhere. It's been running five days a week, when, when it's possible. I know that was a big complaint, but it's, it's been out. They just, like I said, the rain. Our water projects will be starting in the twelfth. They're starting with valves. And then, and then a week, week after that, we're gonna start on Mill Street. They're, they're waiting on some fittings, yeah, some couplers. All the pipe is here, it was delivered here last week for all the water, water lines that are running. Just waiting on some couplers, and that'll be started. Everybody's noticed Chestnut Street's been paved. It's a world of difference down through there, they've got the curbs in, they got a few more things to knock out, and they plan on having those knocked out in the next week and a half, and Chestnut Street, they have come back in. Like I said, another one I had on here, but we already covered it, is leaks. It's a non-stop leaks. I hope people understand that these guys are really doing everything they can. We've had them all weekend long, it's just been non-stop here lately.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we are to ordinance forty-three dash twenty-one. Someone introduce, please.
I'll introduce that.
Thank you.
Thank you. An ordinance adopting camping regulations. Whereas the city of Nelsonville deems it appropriate to adopt camping regulations. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville hereby adopts camping regulations in accordance with Exhibit A, attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, and these regulations shall be placed in the Nelsonville City Code. I believe it's in that chapter nine point one nine, yeah. The foregoing ordinance was adopted, and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one two one point two two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twelfth day of July two thousand twenty-one.
It's just the first grade. Okay.
All right. Before we read the next one, I make a suggestion that we make this effective till next December. By the time this goes into effect, you're not gonna be able to capture, I know a lot of people wanted a temporary-type thing, but I think if you give it less than six months, and really no time to advertise it, I don't think you're gonna get the reward that you want, that you, everyone's anticipating, and then you're gonna be like, oh, we're done with it, shut it down. I don't think that's necessarily fair to, I think what we're trying to accomplish.
I don't have an issue with that, you know, the cancellation that kind of put a stall on our tactics there, you know, last, you know, two weeks ago. You know, originally, it was meant to be, you know, a trial period this year, so I guess, you know, we'll talk to council and see what everybody wants to do. You know, limited scope of the streets, obviously, I'm bored, just, you know, working on it. So, you guys, what do you think?
No, I have no problem with that, I think the idea is that this is temporary, and if we encounter a problem, we can always revoke it.
I agree.
At that point, so.
I just, I don't wanna get to, you know, end of year and then be disappointed because we haven't seen fruits of the labor, you know, and it's, it's, I honestly think that less than six months is really a.
Okay, I don't have an issue with that, I'm biased.
So, the amendment would, what the amendment would be is that, we're saying that it would be from now until, when's the trail close?
Twenty-two.
No.
Well, right now, it's until the end of December this year.
But when do the trails close? I thought we were doing it until the trails closed, and then?
Through the end of the year.
You, you could do that, the trails are open from April to November, I believe, the first is December, it might be, or the end of, yeah, it might be.
And I think just for simplicity, say, if we just went to the end of December. So, there was no, no question.
I guess my question is, are we saying then January, February, March?
Well, just remember, there's gonna be ATVs that are gonna be licensed, have them, that we're not gonna be able to do anything about, I don't want.
Right, and that's, that's a different, yeah, yeah, that's a different, that's a different situation that we're talking about.
Might have ATVs up clearing snow and blades, things like that, too.
But they would need to be licensed, that's what I'm saying.
We don't have that.
Yeah, and I would, I guess I would prefer that we have that gap till it's like, till the end of December, which is kinda like when the trail's on, but then again, it starts in April when the trail's open and we don't have those unlicensed, un-
So you could say, um, you could, you could say that it is dated, um, because in case the the forest changes their dates, you know, at any point, you could always just state that, you know, when they're when the Wayne National Forest Trails are, you know, open for riding.
I like that amendment better.
When they're open for riding? Yes, absolutely.
So how do you wanna read it? This ordinance will be in effect until?
Until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, until during, 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 during dates between Wayne National Forest- During, during trails, opening periods.
Yeah, for Wayne National Forest. Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Uh, ordinance forty-four dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
An ordinance authorizing the use of ATVs on city streets. Whereas the city desires to make Nelsonville an ATV-friendly community. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville authorizes use of ATVs on city streets in accordance with the following regulations. Streets to be ATV-friendly. Hawking Parkway from Canal Street to six ninety-one. Canal Street from six ninety-one to John Lloyd Evans Drive, we have to drive. John Lloyd Evans Drive to Door Run Road. Hawking Parkway from Canal Street to State Route six ninety-one. Riverside Drive from Hawking Parkway to Wolf Bennett Road. Borough Boulevard to Sylvania Avenue to Wood Lane Drive. Licensed ATVs for previous to the ordinance will be, will still be allowed on all streets. Non-licensed ATVs will be restricted to above-listed streets. Non-licensed ATVs permitted to be on selected roadways from sunrise to sundown seven days per week unless a special event is organized with the city approval, then hours can be extended. All traffic laws apply. Vehicles must be insured, ridden by licensed drivers, eighteen and older. All other Ohio laws will apply. In addition to the below rules, ATVs must be equipped with one rearview mirror. If vehicle is not equipped with turn signals, ATV operators must use hand signals per Ohio Revised Code four-five-one-one-point-four-zero. Vehicles must be equipped with a working rear brake line. ATV is, ATV exhaust noise must meet the decibel level set forth in Ohio Revised Code four-five-one-nine-point-two-zero. Vehicles must be equipped with working horn. Vehicles must not create excessive mud or dirt on city streets. This ordinance will be in effect until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty during, two, during the times Wayne National Forest Trails are open. Per Ohio Revised Code four-five-one-nine-point-two-zero equipment rules, these regulations would apply and be enforced by the police department. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twelfth day of July, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Ordinance forty-five dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
I will introduce that.
Back to on everybody. I was looking at a different ordinance, or suspension of rules. Please continue.
Thank you.
Forgive me, sir.
Okay.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with AEP to remove their electrical lines along the front of the wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city needs to have AEP remove its electric lines in front of the new wastewater treatment plant for construction of phase two of the project, and there are sufficient funds in the project to cover the cost. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville authorizes the city manager to execute a contract with AEP to move its electric lines in front of the new wastewater treatment plant, a copy of which contract is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven-thirty-one-point-thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that electric lines can be moved as soon as possible, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-eighth day of June, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on this? Need to suspend the rule, second that.
Um, Ms. Brandt? Yeah, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Is this on suspension or AEP?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Um
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance forty-six dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please. I'll introduce it. Thank you.
An ordinance approving change order number five for Phase One Pump Station and Trunk Sewer and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city engineer is recommending approval of change order number five for the Pump Station and Trunk Sewer Project and indicates there is sufficient fund in project to pay for the change order. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville approves the payment of change order number five for Phase One of the Pump Station and Trunk Sewer Project, a copy of which change order is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven-thirty-one-point-thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the change order can be paid as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of rules on the twenty-eighth day of June, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter? Okay, motion to suspend?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes.
Okay, um, ordinance forty-seven dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
I will introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance enacting new chapter, uh, nine-point-one-eight, nine-point-one-eight entitled Lodging Excise Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. Whereas Chapter five-seven-three-nine of the Ohio Revised Code grants municipal corporations the authority to level lodging taxes, excise taxes. And whereas the city council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to revise city ordinance fourteen-point-zero-two and twenty-seven, I'm sorry, fourteen-bash-zero-two and twenty-seven dash twelve to enact new chapter one, nine-point-one-eight entitled Lodging Excise Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. Now, now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, a new chapter nine-point-one-eight entitled Lodging Excise Tax of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio being enacted to read as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herein. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after August first, two thousand twenty-one. Duly enacted by council on second reading the twelfth day of July, two thousand twenty-one.
You'll have to suspend the rolls since you didn't read it on the fourteen, or can't effective on August first.
Okay, so if we suspend the rolls, good. We'll go on back on August first.
Don't attach number considering that it'll be effective on August first.
Okay. Um, so just like, so everybody understands, basically what this does is it creates, um, some enforcement mechanisms for the auditor's office to um, ensure that the excise, that the transient guest tax is actually collected. Um, because as it stands right now, there's a couple ordinances that exist stating the three percent guest tax, but there's no enforcement mechanism, um, in place. So that's what this is doing. So I will make a motion to suspend.
Second that.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
I just have a quick question. Does this also include bed tax or campground?
It doesn't include campground. It's Airbnb, VRBOs, hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, and campground. What's no?
No.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt? Mr. Sherman?
No.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. All right, uh, ordinance forty-eight dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the Paid Health RX Program and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city desires to sign an agreement for the Paid Health RX Program. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to sign a contract with Paid Health RX Program. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville. City of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-two-one-point-two-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven-thirty-one-point-thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that contract can be effective July first, two thousand twenty-one, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-eighth day, I'm sorry, the twelfth day of July, two thousand twenty-one.
You need to suspend again.
So is this just insurance?
Yeah, if I could briefly, it's a program, the health insurance already puts on, the health trust city takes part in. Um, everybody signed up, all the other participants in the consortium have signed up except for us. Um, they basically go after rebates for prescriptions that are employees already get. And I, I actually don't know how they get paid. I assume they take a portion of the rebate and then it costs the city, the consortium, less to pay for those prescriptions when they get the other part of the rebate back, which they believe will lower, or keep our premium cost low. So there's no out-of-pocket expense to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to suspend?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Are we on suspension or adoption?
Suspension.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-one. Uh, need someone to introduce it, please. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute documents necessary for the Phase Three Sewer Project EPA Review Fee and Plan Submission and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city desires to submit to the AEP its Phase Three Sewer Project EPA Review Fee and Plan Submission. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute the documents attached here to and incorporated herein by reference for the Phase Three Sewer Project EPA Review Fee and Plan Submission. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven-thirty-one-point-thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because documents need to be submitted as soon as possible and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-eighth day of June, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on this matter?
If Phase Three converted outside, outside the city limits enough, I know.
No, sir. Um, the biggest chunk of it is, but that includes, um, upgrading all the lift stations and we're adding sewer. I think in the last of the remaining parts of the city that doesn't have sewer, so, um, I know out of
All right.
Trash pile, railroad, and there's a couple others.
No, that was added later. When I first started, it was all out of the city and I wanted to make sure that on the, on sewer areas in the city that were included.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Motion to- Motion to suspend?
Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Go do it, Doc.
Second that.
I started with you.
Hey, you started with that.
All right.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, yes, I motion to adopt.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Fifty-two-one, yes. Ordinance fifty dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with ITEC and Xerox Financial Services LLC and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city desires to enter into a contract with ITEC- Whereas the city desires to enter into a contract with ITEC and Xerox Financial Services LLC for copiers. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio that the city manager is authorized to execute the contracts attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference with ITEC and Xerox Financial Services LLC for copiers effective July first, two thousand twenty one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because the contract is effective July first, two thousand twenty one, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty eighth day of June, two thousand twenty one.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter? Please.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so didn't we get rid of like a contract for something similar to this last year or is that something else?
We wanted to get rid of it. However, we were locked in from where this contract was locked in by the previous administration. And uh, it was seventy five hundred dollars a year, so it's fifteen hundred dollars per machine. We had five machines and then uh, we get charged going over our allotted amount of copies, which we had thirty four hundred dollars. So it's a long way of saying that we tried to get rid of this last year, however, we were stuck in the contract. And the reason why we're stuck in the contract so long is we exited the contract prior to this prematurely and they moved the balance over like trading in a car and they just moved that balance over to the other side.
So it, I think it said like three hundred a month. What's the difference on this new and we would do as to compare to the old? Was it the same?
Cheaper. So um, last year, uh, I don't have the monthly numbers, but I have the annual numbers. Last year it was seventy five hundred was the base cost for the five machines and then thirty four hundred for the overage, which was ten nine a year for copiers. Uh, where we're at now is we've adjusted, so we're gonna drop down to four machines instead of five. So we have four machines and then we adjusted our allotted amount of paper based off the last two years average. And that comes out to six thousand dollars total a year. So I expect roughly a forty nine hundred dollar annual savings.
And I have just a couple of questions. Um, I don't have the contract pulled up. You probably remember them. So um, number four, where it says we can't cancel, period, is that like normal for contracts? I thought you could always.
That's not normal, but it's something you can agree to.
The last one we were locked into, the only way to cancel was to pay the exit fee, so.
Kind of like a cell phone contract.
Yeah.
And it also says after the first year that they can raise the base price. Is that something we can negotiate with?
Absolutely. I'll go back for that one all day.
Okay, thank you. And then it was number fifteen said you have to get insurance for it? I didn't understand that at all.
Um, I don't believe that'd be any different than what we have already because we have a lot of our equipment's already on our insurance, so it'd just be a matter of adding it to our plan.
You have to have insurance?
It's a really expensive machine.
Yeah, there are very expensive machines that something gets, if there was a fire.
Like a fire.
You know, they would want their asset to be replaced.
And we would wanna have to pay for insurance, but.
Okay.
Our liability insurance typically covers most anything like that.
That's why I wonder why we had to buy special.
We should have.
And if you have to buy special, we just have to cover it.
Sometimes they want that listed.
Yeah, we should have to add a list that has a list.
Then it would say.
So if you, similar like if you have a homeowner policy, you cover a diamond ring on it, you have to list it on the policy because there's a difference. You have to just list the copiers on there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Says we, we plan on using less paper this year. You said we had an overage last year, right?
So it was, so the overage was based off, I don't know how they came up with the number five years ago, I believe it was, uh, as what their usage would be. But a couple of the things we did, so the color prints are extremely expensive. So what this contract has, it has three printers that are black and white only. One for PD, one for FD, and one for my office. And then the only one that'll have color capability will be in Taylor's office. And everybody will be able to print color on that machine. They just have to type in their code so we can track who's running up the color copies.
Right.
Yeah, printers.
Uh, right.
Yeah. We'd like to show one.
Okay. Motion to suspend.
Sub move.
Second. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Or to, motion to adopt, oh, sorry, adopt.
Okay, okay. Um, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance fifty one dash twenty one. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty one appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated, unappropriated balance the following. Eleven thousand two hundred forty six dollars from general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero operating supplies. Whereas the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate money. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, follow. The two thousand twenty one appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sum from the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. Eleven thousand four two hundred forty six dollars from general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero operating supply. The total appropriations are increased by said amount. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law fully enacted by council on second reading the twelfth day of July, two thousand twenty one.
Any council discussion about this issue, sorry? Okay. Two. Okay, ordinance fifty two dash twenty one. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the payment of prior, prior year bills of the city attorney. Whereas the city desires to authorize the payment of prior year bills of the city attorney. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio that the city authorizes the payment of all prior year bills of the city attorney. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. Fully enacted by council on second reading until the day of July, two thousand twenty one.
Okay, we are to the city manager's report. Take your time.
All righty, thank you. Um. The first thing, first, excuse me, the first thing I have for tonight is I would like to recommend to council and hopefully get a vote tonight to terminate our contract with Mr. Hunter as legal, uh, legal all director.
Okay. All right, motion to terminate.
Yes.
Mr. Hunter.
Can I make a point of order, please?
Absolutely, great, go ahead.
Uh, the, the power to remove the city manager is vested solely in council on section four oh eight, or article four oh eight eleven. And I think that it would take, we should, there should be a um, either a resolution or ordinance doing that is council desires to do that. And uh, that, that's just a point I wanted to make that that if you check the charter, the power to remove the city attorney, it, it's actually with council.
Motion sufficient as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Hunter says a, a motion is sufficient with him.
Uh, that's good with him. I guess it's good with me.
All right. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we, the uh, we terminated contract with Mr. Hunter.
All contracts.
All contracts.
Second.
Second.
You need a second.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Grant?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter, I'd like to thank you for all your years of service to the city of Nelsonville. The second part is Brammer. Mr. Brammer, uh, Chief Barber has recommended that Mr. Brammer become a full-time firefighter with us. I think that's a great idea. He has completed all this paperwork. I do believe everything has been uploaded into uh, OPNF. However, um, we still got a little bit of time because he's got to finish up his two weeks with his current job to come over to us. So I would like um, council to accept Mr. Brammer on full time as a fireman.
Motion to approve the hiring of Mr. Brammer to full-time firefighter for the chief and city manager's request.
Can I ask a question?
Contingent, I would make a contingent upon his uh, passing of the.
Yeah, the OPNF.
And the OPNF.
Is he who we appointed um, on an interim or not an interim, a temporary basis or whatever that was?
No, that was uh, um. No, no. Mitch, Tommy Mitchell.
Yeah. So what position is this? Okay, did somebody resign?
Just position.
Oh, this is just, I thought, I thought the other one was, was, I'm sorry, that's why I was asking. I thought the other one was just.
We've had, we've been working with some, some physician.
What's Mr. Brammer's first name?
Jacob.
Jacob Brammer.
So to clarify, uh, Scotty McKee stepped down and then that's when we put uh, Tommy in there, conditionally upon his completion of EMS. And then this is Mr. Brammer uh, filling in just position.
Yeah, so uh, currently Brammer's a part-time firefighter at the city. Uh, firefighter's in good standing, been here for a number of years. Um, per union contract because of the position announced. Um, the rest of crew uh, knew that uh, Brammer wanted the position, so it was enough to test the posting. And we went ahead and put everything to OPNF, made sure Taylor's office had a location of the bay area. So now we're just gonna give it time to give his employer two weeks notice. And uh, with council's approval, we'll put him in.
Yeah, I think I was just confused. Um, you know, we did the other appointment because it was a similar timeframe.
Full-time and part-time position.
Okay.
So and I'm, and I'm good as long as it's contingent on the OPNF, they've worked anything.
It has successfully been completed and it should have been submitted. We're explaining that. Yeah. The guys are doing really good.
Getting ahead of the ball on that before we even come and ask both departments.
Did you motion?
Okay, I'll side with him.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
The question? I'm sorry, I'm kind of weird.
The firefighter position?
Yeah.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. The the next part is, so tomorrow, um, we have to get formal permission from the commissioners in order to do Phase Three of Donville. So it's on their radar. We're on their uh, agenda tomorrow for the meeting. So Mr. Betts and myself will be there and hopefully that's all taken care of. On Wednesday is the Donville meeting, so I don't, I want to make sure I point a little bit of clarification to this. This is the one Michael Betts has been talking about quite a bit. So Wednesday at the school, uh, elementary school cafeteria, six o'clock, we are having a public meeting to talk about adding sewer service to Imperial in Donville.
That's at the school in Donville?
At the school, the element Nelsonville.
Nelson Elementary, okay.
Yeah. Uh, there was a lot of uh, confusion over the weekend. There's no talk of annexation at this meeting. There's no talk of switching their water over to Nelsonville Water.
Which can't happen anyway.
Right.
So it's all water holes still remain liacs.
Absolutely. Uh, it's only sewer for those, but there was a lot of other assumptions made and got folks really fired up. So uh, I just want to clarify that it's sewer only for those two areas within the MAFD area. I can get you all copy incident mail if you'd like. And then uh, it's the same one we've set out before. Then plant construction's moving along. I don't know if you all have been down that way, but uh, quite a bit of work's happening fast. Thank you for passing the uh, ordinance for AEP to drop their lines below ground. That's not quite holding it up, but it's getting really close to holding up the project, so that's very helpful. Uh, Chestnut Street, as uh, Jason mentioned, you know, it is paved now. It's a superhighway. And uh, there's, yeah, there's still, there's still work to be done there. We got a couple more driveway aprons to put in or curbs, I believe, and uh, backfill the dirt and plant grass. The, as Jason also mentioned, Mill Street's gonna be the first street we tear up for water line repairs, the new water lines going in. Our guys also have to change out a couple pieces of sewer line in there. So that way we don't really, ideally, we won't have to worry about digging that road up for a really long time. Meters have been ordered. Uh, they have not started arriving yet. Uh, just as a reminder to everybody, just about everybody's gonna get new water meters and they're all AMI system, which means they uh, they read, they read and radio back to the water office four times a day. So folks will have the option to get a log on through a computer or an app on their phone and they will be notified immediately if it detects a leak. So, and then you'll be able to see your usage every single day for the day prior.
When will that, when will that happen?
They are, it's possible they'll be done by the end of this calendar year, but it could run into the first part of next year. So at the same time that's happening, um, Taylor's upgrade with VIP is happening and hopefully it's all done at the same time, but both of those pieces of the puzzle have to be done at the exact same time. Well, not the exact same time, but before it'll work as it's supposed to. So that's probably after the first of the year. It's a safe bet. Then uh, uh, presentation, so we're, we're working on a presentation right now uh, for the Small Cities Grant. I've mentioned a few times, it's a ninety five and five percent match from us. It's for the year twenty twenty three through ODOT. So if we get it, uh, it would be ninety five percent paid for through the state, five percent on us. And uh, currently our cost is roughly, based off today's number, roughly uh, hundred and twenty thousand, I think, if we get approved. Um, and what that would include is Canal Street from six ninety one to the roundabout, all new resurfaced. And then uh, Borough Boulevard from Canal Street up over Mason City Hill and it would stop at the overpass for the bypass. Uh, so what we're doing now is our prepackage has been accepted. Now we have to build a presentation. Uh, Mr. Pfeiffer, Dan, he's been helping me. He went and videoed the whole thing, so we're putting together that uh, now it's a ten-minute presentation, seven-minute brief, three-minute Q and A. And uh, that is happening, I believe, on July fourteenth, if I'm going from memory. So that's in the hover.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Going back a couple of things, um, Mill Street, when that gets torn up, will that be, um, will bricks be relayed or will that be paved?
So.
When it's done.
Bricks, so a couple of things are gonna happen there. The first thing is we are gonna go in, uh, I'm not sure if it's gonna be exactly the timeline, but we're gonna go in. Uh, hey Jason, I told you, we're gonna go in and uh, we're gonna dig up all the five-sided bricks and we're gonna save all those. For those who don't know, it's the only place we know of in town that still has five-sided brick, so we wanna go get those, palletize the map back for a future project that, you know, wherever it could be used. And then that'll get backfilled. After that, the road will be paved all the way to the top, so, and uh.
And what about, is that Cotner? Right, the Cotner to Mill?
So currently I've proposed to uh, street committee to pave uh, Cotner and then Poling and then East Fr- or, yeah, East Franklin, that one little area, and then that area would be done.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, that's changeable, but that's what, what's set in place now.
And your goal would be to pave it all at the same time, so you have the machine drop fee only one time and.
It is, so it doesn't look like it's gonna line up like I hook. Uh, it's very likely Shelley and Sands will get that work for the asphalt. And then uh, it depends on what kind of price they give us in comparison to the quotes we already have. Now, the quote we already have, because it's four streets altogether, we would only have one drop. Now, the quote we already have, because it's four streets altogether, we would only have one drop fee. Whereas if we did one and then waited a month and then did another one, you'd have two of the drop fees. So they're kind of being reduced, but not like I'd hoped through the original grant company. Okay. Give me one question. All right. ARP funds, Taylor already spilled the bad news on that. Just for more clarification on that, we were under the impression we were gonna get one point oh one dollar, or one point oh one million dollars. The, at the last minute, it was changed to where all small cities got fifty percent cut. So to back up and give the rest, rest of the story, if you will, the county got their full allocation at the beginning of June, I believe, what, June seventh or ninth? They got their, June seventh, the county got their full allocation of monies. That's also when the state got their full allocations of money and large cities got their full allocation of money. Small city pot hung out, I think that's when it went to the state as well. I don't know that for certain, but, and then from there, it wasn't in the bill to give townships any money. So they cut all the small cities in half, put all that into a puzzle and then redistributed to the townships throughout the state. And that's why we end up with fifty percent cut. So. And with that said, there's also another bill in the future. I shared on email, but just for everyone else. Currently, the way the bill is being presented is if, as an example, if you worked at Rocky and lived in Logan, you would not pay sales tax anymore. In fact, or I'm sorry, not sales tax, but income tax. And we would be responsible for reimbursing the income tax clear back to the beginning of the pandemic. So that is going to be, that's definitely on his radar. And I know there was mention of Paul's been doing a resolution, you know, on our thoughts on, or, you know, where we stand on that. But did want to bring that up because that is happening in the background.
Scheduled to be adopted.
Oh, never mind. Thank you.
Wow. So what can you say about living out, you know, working out?
So if you, so if you work at, as an example, Rocky, you can do the schools as well, and you telework from home.
Oh, probably.
And you stay at home the whole time in Logan, then we are now going to have to refund, well, stop charging you income tax now and refund clear back to the beginning roughly of the pandemic.
Because you're working at home.
Correct.
What the amendment is, is it allows you to go back now and get a refund from twenty twenty, which those taxes have already been taken and distributed, right? We based our budget on that. And then you'd also now be able to go back from this point, like at this point in twenty twenty-one, where they've taken the, you're right, it's like you work in Athens, but you live in all of it. So you have Athens City income tax taken out as well as non-Georgia. You could then go back and request a refund for the twenty twenty, so like March of, if you were looking from March of twenty twenty-three, the end of twenty twenty, and then from now and to the beginning of twenty twenty-one. But the problem with that is that's how we base our, you know, we have estimates of what that's gonna be, and we base our budget planning on that. And so now we have to refund hundreds of thousands of dollars to be known. If we have many people working.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I think that, so the, yeah. The two points that complicated too is that, and I don't mind even saying, even though we're responsible for income tax in the state, Ohio has basically one of the worst funding mechanisms for local governments, which is the patchwork of income taxes. And the state's kind of bargain with the devil over the last three decades has been cutting funding from them and allowing the city to claw back from whoever works or lives in the city. And so what this does is kind of go back on that bargain and says, we expect you to maintain these services for these workplaces, but now you can't fund it how we told you to. And nor are we going to help fund the city, the state, help fund the city. And they're basing it on an argument of fairness. Well, fairness would be the state would fill the gap where they once did before this crazy income tax system came into place. I don't mind saying it's crazy because it's unique. And how much it varies across the state versus other states. The other problem is in Nelsonville, the folks who adopted telework in twenty twenty and so far in twenty twenty-one are basically the biggest employers who have the most employees and the, the highest requirement for degrees, which would typically equate to higher pay. So we would be in a pretty vulnerable position. I think it would be hard to prove that they were telehealth all the time too. So, you know, and, and then what portion were they actually in office versus not? So, I mean, that's just gonna create all kinds of messes for the state. I can't imagine.
Gary, can you speak like from, if you pointed like the high municipal league, is it, is it legal to make a law like retroactive? I'm not saying retroactive like that.
To take it back?
Wow, those are arguments that are, are made in the court system and the courts are not favorable to municipal houses at the moment. Legislators just doing these things they want to do. They violate home rules, in my opinion, all the time, all the time. Retroactive legislation, certain kinds of legislation can't be retroactive.
I mean, it just seems like it's, you know, when you have municipal, municipalities planning, spending based on, you know, revenues they've already technically collected, and then they're gonna ask us to pay that back.
All right.
I mean, like, so how would you know?
While cutting, while cutting our rest claim.
How would you know who to pay that back to?
So the, it gets complicated in a way. The resident or non-resident, I guess you might say, the employee would just basically claim it on their tax form. So the thinking is, is that the state or the courts, one of them will set up a system of which cities will have to comply with. I don't know if that means separate filing or a separate form or, there's really a ton of options, but it basically will mean they'll say, we didn't have the taxable income our employers said we did because I worked from home out in the middle of Lowdy Township or somewhere. So they get, you know, with income tax, it's trouble to get specific, but I can tell you, I spoke to one HR department in the city of one of our largest employers. When this bill was really kind of rumbling and starting to become more serious, which would be at least maybe four or six weeks ago. And they estimated eighty-five percent were still at home. And so that's this year. So that, imagine eighty-five percent of the tax money possibly from twenty twenty and until that point in twenty twenty-one. So it's, it's a serious, it's a serious issue. Cities like Nelsonville where employers, our largest employers are remote working, or at least were largely remote working, it's, it's a serious threat.
Yeah, I understand, you know, I work in Athens but live in Nelsonville, so I'm in that position. And I have worked from home since March twentieth of last year, all but maybe ten days I have been in Athens. And working, and even on those days, they weren't four days in Athens. It was like, you know, a few hours here or there. And so I understand that point, but yeah, I, I paid Athens a lot of money, but I'm not there. But at the same time, from a, you know, a city standpoint, I just think this could be, this is gonna be like so detrimental to us if, if it passes.
I heard one argument from Columbus, from the state house that said, how many employees are really gonna know to request the refund? I can tell you, anyone in this country who knows they have eight hundred dollars coming to them is gonna fill in one piece of paper to my office to get it. So I guarantee you it'll run through group chats and email chains through all of our major employers the moment it becomes in effect. I'm not saying it's like a sky's falling scenario, but it's, it's a serious threat. So the state still wants to do you a favor and collect your income tax.
Yeah, right. Yeah. I mean, like, you know, we're, we're talking, you know, probably hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city with that.
And payouts over the next, I mean, I don't know when its effective date would be, but next tax season would be a different moment. Yeah. Well, you're in the question with paying an interest due. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, State House.
Yeah, looking out for the little people.
Okay, Mr. Frank, you have anything?
You have anything else? Um, a couple of little things, or a couple of things and then one other one. And the next meeting will have the resolution and of accepting. We got all three checks. Very grateful to the Bear Brothers Foundation, Rocky Community Improvement Grant and the Foundation for Appalachia, Ohio. They all came through to pay for our pump at the pool this year. So we couldn't be open right now without them and very much appreciate it and will formally recognize them at the next meeting. The other thing about that too is our other pump is actually at the shop, the old one. And we're actually gonna be able to repair it relatively inexpensively and have it on the shelf should something break and have a backup. So that's, fingers crossed. Then the last thing I have is
I have, I have a question about the pool. I've noticed that one of the big, like, umbrellas doesn't have a cover on it, and I was wondering what
So those covers are five thousand dollars each.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
And we, what we tried to do this year, instead of buying more umbrellas, was to, we applied for the Rocky Community Improvement Grant to buy the sale sun shades, and they're significantly cheaper. For five thousand dollars, you can buy a whole, probably enough for a couple of years. And we were gonna try to see if there's any better and cheaper. Well, obviously it's cheaper. We did not get the grant for that. So we just haven't purchased any at this time to put them up and try them out.
If, if that's an option we go to, is that they umbrella, is it like removable? Does it take up a lot of space if it isn't being used as a shade spot?
It would be. I believe they're removable, aren't they, all those parts? Yeah. Then we would need to put poles in place of them to tie off the shades though.
Okay.
So that's something that we're working on throughout the, we'll be working on for the rest of this year and hopefully by the end of this full season, we're gonna try and make some other improvements to it as well. I can tell you all pretty confidently that our pool has a really big leak in it and
I checked it yesterday. It went up seventy thousand gallons since Monday.
So last Monday, so we're losing about seventy thousand gallons of water leak, or seventy thousand gallons of water per week.
It took roughly three hundred and twenty-four thousand to fill it, and we're at eight hundred and ninety-four thousand gallons right now.
So we're not in the best position to troubleshoot until we shut down for the year. So when we shut down for the year, we'll be able to troubleshoot a couple of different areas, see if we can find the leak. And I, I don't even want to tell you a number for repair because I have absolutely no idea. Like today, we got a big leak.
Yeah, I, I, after, I've been to the pool a few times with my fourteen-year-old. The water's very warm. I personally believe we're losing it somewhere between the meter and the pump. Where it's not actually filling the pool because the water's staying very warm. And if it was that much water going into the pool, the water would be cold.
So there's one, there's one way of checking that is take a five-gallon bucket of water, sit it on the steps at the same level as your pool water, and you'll be able to tell if, if you're losing it in the pool or not. Because your pool water will go down and your bucket won't.
The, the pool's staying and there's a fluid.
Right.
There's a fluid that gets on, that keeps it full.
Right, exactly. But what I'm saying is, is you'll know by the level of the bucket in there, there'll be a fluctuation.
But by the temperature of the water, the water comes out, it's fifty degrees coming out of that. If it would, if we had lost five hundred thousand gallons of water and it was pumping into the pool, the pool would never get warm. The pool water's running and it stays consistent at close to eighty degrees.
Let's just a quick thought. How about we, can you shut it off with the meter and see if the pool stays up?
Well, there you go. You can do that too, put the bucket in there.
Put the bucket on your head.
Excuse me? Or water, Mr. President?
Yeah. So that's where we're at on that. We do know, we are not ignoring it by any stretch of the imagination. I just didn't want to come to you a couple of months from now and say, hey, we got a massive leak in the line from the light, the pool lights back. Which is, you know, another very common place, there's pools leak as well. So it could be, as you all have mentioned, very good suggestions, you know, we can go through and just start trying them all.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, of course.
So the pool opened, what, twenty years ago?
Twenty years ago.
Um, how many times have we replaced like the umbrella, the umbrella covers at the pool? How many times? So that, I'm just wondering like from, you know, like a routine maintenance standpoint, like what are we looking at?
So, but all of you are correct. So what it is, is they've been buying one at a time here and there. And then Leslie's done a great job at finding somebody to sew them back up. Because what happens is the material just gets dried out from the sun and then starts tearing, you know, and of course they're so bright, they start fading as well. So I believe we have four total now, right? But most of them are scrapped, three, three total, and most of them are, or two of them are shreds. So for the most part, and then the other one is there. So we can still continue down that route. We're just looking for something maybe more cost-effective to provide the same thing.
Sure. I understand. I was just wondering from a, just from a, you know, upkeep, maintenance standpoint, like how often we've been replacing them, you know, over twenty years, you know?
Sure.
So for, for cost effectiveness, return on investment kind of thing.
All right. And then the last thing I have, I would like to recommend Mr. Jonathan Rowe as temporary counsel pending figuring out the contract, what that looks like going forward. He, his family is a long time from around here, his dad has a office down in Athens. His dad is the solicitor for Albany and any questions you might have, I can answer probably about him. He's a younger guy.
Before I, is it something we would go on?
So according to Greg, where he quoted, you know, quoted the charter, then yes.
So I guess I would like to know a little bit about him before you.
Sure. So
The city attorney appoints and, and council confirms
So
on, on the appointment.
The charter reads, the charter reads that the city manager appoints the city attorney and council confirms.
So he's a Athens resident, was homeschooled, then went to OU, got his engineering degree when he graduated high school. And then from there, he went over to the Virginia area and then went to law school at Duke and got his law degree at Duke University. And then from there, he started working in larger practices in the Washington DC area. I don't remember the name off the top of my head, but it's the same one that the big, Mueller, yeah, Mueller worked at. So he moved back here, him and his wife and two kids. They moved back here at the beginning of COVID last year to get away from the big city. And he's been practicing law there at his father's practice. And very eager to help with Nelsonville. He's got a lot of ideas as well on how to move forward, especially after the pandemic and people working from home, and how do you capture that? So I think he brings a lot to the, a lot to the table. He's definitely greener around the years than, you know, what we've had. But I don't know that that would be a problem for him.
So is he, I guess, I don't know the common terms. There's different kinds of eternities. Has he ever done anything for like a, a city or anything?
So he has been helping his father with this stuff at Albany and as, doing the very similar stuff that we're doing here. That is not what he was doing in DC. In DC, he was doing patent law and bringing up the other one, I apologize. So the municipality stuff is newer to him, moving here and working with his father.
How many years of law has he been practicing?
I don't remember the number. I know I asked, I looked at it. I don't remember. It's
Plus ten?
No.
No, no.
Yeah, it sounds about right, seven.
So it looks like you graduated from Duke in sixteen?
Six. Five. So again, I'd like to recommend you guys log into meeting and negotiate a contract from there.
I'll make that motion, make the motion that we accept the city manager's recommendation with Mr. Rowe as interim city law director.
So interim, does that mean like temporary, probationary? I mean, what is that?
Well, we don't have a contract set with him, so we would have him as the interim and then negotiate the contract. And if it works out, then move forward.
And if it doesn't, then it's, nothing's been signed or anything yet, right? I mean, does that work?
No.
It doesn't?
I know I'm not your city attorney anymore, but I would suggest you put a salary.
So well, no problem. well, no problem. Um, we've talked briefly and he would like, uh, full medical benefits and forty thousand dollars a year for part time.
I mean, I guess just if it doesn't work out, is there like clauses contracts? I mean, what?
To me, the contract, or at least what I want in the contract is to have the exact same thing that we have now where we can terminate at any point. Where we're not locked into years.
I like that. Does anyone know who?
Another family.
I meant when it came in the city hall.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I'll amend my motion, including the salary and healthcare benefit.
Twenty-five hours per week.
Twenty hour, twenty-five hours per week, um, as interim law director until we can finalize the contract.
Is that for like the mayor's court too?
Correct.
He would also be the first term.
My question is, I think this stuff will get negotiated later, but you're saying twenty-five hours a week. What if one week is thirty hours?
So when we talked to him, um, he was more concerned about anything actually, but at the end of the month, you know, he, what he was saying somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty-five hours per month is what he was in the ballpark thinking. And it could be less, could be more, especially in the beginning. And then, uh, you know, just that learning curve. So after that, he, uh, well, I don't have anything in writing after that, so.
I said he was open for thirty-two.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, I'm from full time, fully scheduled, thirty-three hours, because thirty-two is still considered part time, I think.
Right. He doesn't want full time part time, is what he was wanting.
How's it roll, man?
Mr. Grant?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yeah.
Mr. Smith?
Oh, let me call him back. I don't know what happened to him. He's gone.
Another city that can fly.
He calls really hard. I, yeah, I didn't. We didn't hang up.
No, no, no.
No, no, he, he texted me.
I'm not certified.
All right, I'm back.
Greg, there's a motion on the floor to accept, uh, uh, the city manager's recommendation, uh, to hire Mr. Rowe as a interim city law director at forty thousand dollars a year plus city uh, health benefits on a part-time basis.
I have a file with him, pointing him temporarily, but I think that any contract ought to come in as an ordinance.
I agree.
I, 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 I'll vote to appoint him temporarily, that, that's the motion.
That is the motion.
Okay.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The, one last thing that Nan put up there. So there's three dead, I believe it's three dead small trees on the square. We know about it. We've been in touch with the people that put them in.
They're on the mine side.
They're on the mine side. They said they don't fall under warranty because what we, what they say we did to them.
Or something was mulched.
Over mulched them, that's what it is. So, uh, um, I don't really know where we're at on that yet. So there will be some sort of movement soon. But, uh, it's not being ignored, ignored by any stretch of imagination.
Is that something you can do?
Over mulch a tree? Yeah.
Is that it? Are we sick of more Scott?
Um, Jason, you remember, yeah, Harry's shaking his head, yes. I am definitely not an arborist, sir.
And they also said
They also said they didn't feel they were watered enough in their first year is what we were told. So I don't have an acceptable solution here. Just yet.
A whole bunch of them on the riverbank will pull a couple up and go play on.
FD's on it.
Considerable size differences, buddy.
It'll be all right. And that's all I have. All right. To, uh, through the order, um, I would, uh, go with
I'll go first. All right. So, um, one of the things I wanted to do is, uh, recognize Nelsonville's own, uh, Mackenzie Carey, who finished first runner up, um, at Miss Ohio. Last weekend, I think it was. Uh, and she also won the talent portion of the, uh, competition. So, uh, she really represented our area well. She had a very good platform, uh, about homeless, homelessness and, um, providing like care kits to homeless people. McKenzie is going to be going to law school, um, soon, actually at the University of Edinburgh in Scotland. Um, she earned, I think, over four thousand dollars in scholarships. That's her, at some of the awards, uh, for the Miss Ohio competition. As y'all know, she's been a, um, involved in pageants for a while. She was, uh, Miss Prairie of the Hills a number of years ago, maybe five years ago. And, um, really represented Nelsonville in our area very well. And that's like, I think we all should congratulate her and wish her the best moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Is he still there?
Hey Greg, you still there?
Yeah, I'm still there. Uh, I wanted to also add that McKenzie was, uh, Oliver years ago, when she was, that was, I would say that her name was great. And, uh, I'm sure, uh, that, uh, we're all proud of, proud of her as genie is. And I just wanted to throw genie in there for being with her all the time. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Uh, I'm very excited about, uh, meetings opening up. And I just, uh, hope that, uh, you know, citizens will, uh, begin attending. You know, we have, um, the neighborhood watch meeting, um, you know, we'll have our committee meetings and we'll have our council meetings. So I look forward to seeing some faces again, which would be nice that versus Max and messages, messages. So that'll be great. Uh, so I definitely, uh, I'm excited for that and hopefully others are as well. That's all.
So I'd like to say congratulations to all the Peewee baseball players down at, uh, my field this year, uh, six, seven, eight year olds. Uh, they did a pretty awesome job. It's fun to coach those kids. So congratulations to all the teens out there and all the children that played.
Did you show Connor on the papers?
Uh, no, I don't feed it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Uh, I would just like to thank, uh, the city workers, of course, as much work as they do. Uh, the paving looks really, really nice. It was very stunning, um, to, to watch, to come, good work and then come back and it's done. It was really, really neat. So, uh, I thank you guys for getting that done. There is also a reminder that there's a neighborhood watch meeting, the eight, six o'clock here. Uh, please, everyone, if you can, if you're interested in it, please attend. Uh, we do need every, the police has improved. There's been a lot more arrests. But everyone's helpless needed. So, um, please attend if you can. So that's all I have.
That's great. Um, I have a couple of things. Um, number one, it's great seeing the four different departments updating often. Really, really great. Thank you for coming. Um, another thing, I think Becky may have started to address this already, but if you live on a corner anywhere, um, if you could please just look around your property, maybe drive around it and notice the shrubs and bushes. There are a lot of corners that you really can't see until you pull out in the road. And I really think people just don't realize that that their bushes are really that big. Um, and the last thing, if, if you're out driving, please take a little extra caution because there are little teeny tiny baby ears crossing the street now, very tiny, but this thing. So please just take some extra caution when you're out driving.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Mr. Booth?
Thank you. Uh, just real quickly, uh, Nelsonville Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, has a business appreciation weekend this weekend. Uh, so Friday on the square, five to eight, there's an art opening at Stewart's Opera House. Uh, helping hands at the majestic galleries, uh, they're selling root beer floats to support Nelsonville Rotary. Uh, also the Nelsonville Library Bookmobile. And then Saturday, uh, kids take the city pool, free admission to the first fifty kids, which is awesome. And of course, Sunday, Thunder in the Valley. A lot of stuff going on in Nelsonville this weekend. How did you get all the way made before?
Chief head.
I know. We were struck by the head, everyone. Be safe.
Sorry, I got, uh, an alibi. We are, when we switch, uh, at the next meeting over, we will, uh, not be, or we won't be, uh, we will not have the comments on there. So we'll still be streaming live, but the, the comments that we currently get now won't be available to put on there. And then, um, also to jump on the back of that, they're also, the chamber is also paying for the popsicles for PD and fire to hand out on the Fourth of July. And then PD is going down with them to do the pizza party at the pool after they do the first fifty on Saturday. So lots of good stuff coming up this weekend.
I get that. My wife didn't tell me that last part.
Don't worry, Sarah, I talked to her.
Happy independence, everybody.
All right. All right, motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Uh, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
You're well, yes, Mr. Smith?
Hey Greg.
Greg, motion to adjourn.
I think he's hung up.
No, he's still there. Greg?
I'm gone.
Hey Greg, are you there?
No. He's gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Yes.